We have all of our board members present. And we are going to move right into the approval of the next from the regular board meeting on January 13th and the special board meeting on January 27th. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
I would like to.
Okay, I will entertain motion to a few of the minutes. Thank you, Mel.
It's fine.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye, say aye. Opposed, the same? Very good. Committee reports, we don't have any right now, but we do however have a special guest, Dr. Phil Ellis from the Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation. And he is here to provide us with an update on how the projects go.
Great, thank you very much. I could give you this, and this can go both ways.
Okay, that's good, yeah.
The first thing I'd like to do is to present you with a check.
Well, thank you very much.
For forty-nine thousand dollars from the Cleo Purdy Fund. So this is the follow-up, the terms and conditions of the first grant for the false settlement we met. And so this is for the classroom and for the second semester.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, good. What I've given you, and I have for the public, if you get a couple more, and you guys kind of, so let's go on. It should be coming. I think I gave you it. There we go.
We're good.
Good deal. So what I thought I would do is try to give a little bit of update on the Cleo Purdy Funds at the Community Foundation and the benefit to Central Lake. And we at the office like visuals, so I thought I'd throw a little visual on here too, so it helps as well. So a little bit of the history, Ms. Purdy began giving at the Community Foundation in 2003. And at that time she set up what we call the temporary fund, it was a donor advised fund. And through that fund, she gave us gifts that eventually came to grants here to the tune of five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, the majority of that for the early childhood program. And in 2008, Ms. Purdy committed an irrevocable trust to the Community Foundation and at that time created the Cleo and Purdy Endowment for Education and Families, designated purpose of supporting early childhood education and families. The trust committed ninety percent to the Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation for that purpose. And her graciousness also went to the Santa Barbara Community Foundation, the community in which she lived, ten percent. And that fund was to support English as a Second Language for children that she had worked with in the apartment complex, but actually has become a mobile library in Santa Barbara going into difficult communities there. So upon Ms. Purdy's passing, January of last year, the Community Foundation began realizing the gift, which, and that's where the graphic comes in here, we're anticipating that the gift will be between thirteen and fourteen million dollars. In July, the first four and a half million dollars came in. This is an endowment, and without going into too many details, an endowment is a gift that's meant to last forever. And so when the gift was given to us, given the fact that she had passed and there was no temporary fund, we requested the trustee to give a hundred thousand of that in liquid outside of the endowment, which allowed us to make the two grants of the ninety-nine thousand. So four and a half million has been received. The additional monies were tied up in real estate. That real estate property is in the process of being sold at the present time. And so we do anticipate another five and a half million gift this year. We don't know when this year, but it should happen this year. And then the trust is carrying a note for thirty months with the balance. So I've heard a number of different numbers, but that's what we know, the thirteen. And in the end, given the fact that there's thirty months and there's some interest involved in that, I'm still guessing between thirteen and fourteen million dollars. So a reference here, the idea that we promised Ms. Purdy two things, we do the good she asks us to do, and we do it forever. And that's what an endowment is. And so the Community Foundation Board of Directors is fully responsible for fulfilling that promise. And the board views this as two things. For Central Lake Public Schools, this means the commitment to continue the excellence and build on the excellence of the Susan Purdy-giver early childhood program. And for Central Lake Community, this means the board, the Community Foundation is fully committed to early childhood education and services for all children, zero to five, in the Central Lake community and their families. So that's in keeping with Ms. Purdy's wishes and trust. We'd love to have the thirteen million and have it all available, you know, for the full spending policy, to have more monies available. But that's up to date, and wanted to provide that to you as an update and certainly would entertain, sorry, my back, entertain any questions that you or the board might have.
Well, thank you very much. And this particularly helped having it written out like this so we can see and refer to it. I'm going to open questions to the board first.
Bill, if you could just maybe sort of the folks that kind of understand how much is actually going to be available, because, you know, four point five million sounds great, you know, we could do a lot, but that's not actually available.
Great question. So the board of the Community Foundation has a spending policy, and this is a policy that's developed to do the two things I just mentioned. And so the spending policy is four percent of a twelve-month rolling average, three years. So it's a look back of three years of average of a fund. Now, in this case, the fund has only been there since July. And so based on that, it will take a number of years, hard to say now. I would predict somewhere in the four, three to five-year range for the gift to be fully realized and the funding policy to be able to realize all of that because of the look back. When that is fully realized, we're probably looking in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars a year available to fulfill her intent. So what we were able to do is knowing that with four and a half million in July, that, and I know Mr. Williams and I had this conversation, that we would have commit at least a hundred and fifty thousand for the next two years. We felt comfortable with four and a half million in that we could do that.
And that pretty much matches that, the gift availability out, correct?
Right, right. Now, as more money comes in and that average builds, then the amount available will build.
Okay, that's good to know.
I know it's not the easiest thing to understand.
No, it's not, yes. Okay, thank you. I have a question. You know, when you were here before, you talked about the five areas that Cleo had wanted the money to go to. Will that not be realized until we get the four or five years in? And I mean, is the focus going to be purely zero to five years right now?
That was her primary focus, with the caveat that when all of that is realized, if additional resources are available, other things could be done. So that was the caveat for her. So yes, focus on early childhood.
That's important for everybody to realize because there's been a lot of speculation in town of when these things are going to happen. And of course, everybody wants it to be immediate, you know? But I think you've made it clear that it will be probably four to five years at least before any of those things are started.
And I think a lot of that, I'd say, I think the answer is yes to that. But I also think it kind of depends on how things develop and what are the needs. And it's very hard, it's impossible for me to say what that would be. I think it's important for the community to say what that is. What are the needs for the zero to five and their families? And what is the process by which we come to a point where we say, those are fulfilled and those programs are robust and serving all the kids and their families, now we can look at some other things. And so we would want to work with probably a combination of things, certainly you, the community, probably some type of assessment processes that you already do in terms of kindergarten readiness, for example, and other things that might help us understand academically how the kids are progressing. Then we certainly want to look at social, emotional, and a variety of other developmental factors for the kids and the families. And we would certainly partner with you and the community in doing that.
Phil, quick question. Excuse my absences and my voice, too. It's been a long week. So you touched on the, earlier on when we had this conversation, and you spoke to us earlier, you had made some comments as leading to the fact that the foundation is not micromanaging this district, and this is completely up to the school board's decision and discretion toward the goal of that. My question is, who determines that our zero to five program is successful? And what are the measures and tools to gauge that?
Well, I'm not an expert in early childhood, but I would say we would want to do that in partnership with you. I know you guys have been doing some work with John Olds, our consultant through Advance Ed. So we would want to look at what are kind of standard best practice measures and so forth, and work with you in figuring that out. What are those kind of indicators? So I think, but your first point, it is not our interest to come in and tell you how to run your school district. That's not our job at all. And if you ever feel like we're doing that, push back, let us know that, because that's not our goal. But our goal is to fulfill Ms. Purdy's wish and her intentions. So we want to partner with you and, as I said, the community in any way we can to make that happen.
That just made me think, you know, right now, obviously, we've got the preschool going, and that's like three to five. We're looking at the zero to one. How do you expect that we should go forth trying to reach that zero to three with the limited funds that we're going to have right now? Because we're basically, you know, running close to that amount on a yearly basis now, just trying to reach the three to five in a limited amount.
Perfect question. So I would say what we would expect is that, and what I've had some conversation with our board about is how do we engage you and the community in looking at and creating a vision for that? Because we don't have the money to fund it immediately, but we also don't want to just say, here's a bunch of money, good luck.
Right.
So how do we work together to develop that? Look at best practice models that are out there. Look at things like, what is Char M. doing? What is the Great Start Collaborative doing? Folks that are really investing a lot of energy into early childhood. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, but I also think we need to see what fits for Central Lake. Just because it fits somewhere else, Traverse City, or Grand Rapids, or wherever, doesn't mean it works for Central Lake. So that's why I think engaging you all and engaging the community to understand that, and then develop a model that's going to work, and then keep evaluating and revising as needed. And the idea of zero to five for us is, I mean, there's certainly everything you're doing, there's Head Start, there's early Head Start. The hospitals have programs where when kids are born in the hospital, they'll follow them briefly. So part of it is looking at all of the resources that are available to kids and families and make sure they're maximized.
Lots of opportunity there, I'm sure.
Yep, absolutely. And again, I'm a pediatric psychologist by background, so I know a lot about this.
Okay.
But I'm not an expert in early childhood education and development. So how do we bring that kind of help along? Whether it's, you know, a consultant who happens can help us with this. But again, I want somebody to help us, not say, here's how you have to do it.
Okay.
Because that won't work.
Okay.
Like, you know that won't work. And so that's not our intention.
Can I build on Tracy's question, because that was a great one. I think that's a good time, if you wouldn't mind reminding us about the supplant versus the supplement, as you mentioned early on, or Head Start, some of the other programs. Please talk to us again about the funds being supplemental funds and not just supplant federal dollars that may exist in the community.
Cleo was very, very concerned that her gift would mean, well, now we've got all this money, we just won't worry about other resources that are available. She was very clear that the funding will be after other resources are exhausted. So any opportunity for state, local, federal funding for programs, we fully anticipate will be utilized and sought. We may even have opportunities at times to leverage some more dollars, and we would be open to that as long as the strings aren't too heavily attached. For example, the Keller Foundation has a great interest in early childhood, the Frye Foundation does as well. If we can leverage some additional dollars, we'd love to do that as well.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Yeah, if I may, and I keep referring back to what this document, this paper, we received a similar one like this a while ago. And I'm seeing conflicting views of what her wishes were from this, for this endowment. And now we're seeing a different shift. Now, we always knew preschool first, and we always knew that it will build that up, but there were some kind of tagalongs that wouldn't with that. And so I'm seeing a little bit of a change here.
Tell me the tagalongs, so that will probably help me.
Well, I don't have that document in front of me, so I can't really comment to that. But I'm wondering, is, were there other intentions for this after our zero to five has become up?
Absolutely. So I think what it exactly says in the fund agreement is, this is the focus, if additional resources are available, other things can be considered. So it's, that's the caveat to the others. So I know there have been discussions about things like a Promise Program, early college, a variety of other things. And I would say the board of the Community Foundation is open to those discussions once Ms. Purdy's intentions are fully realized. And that's really what she was looking for. I think she recognized that forever is a long time, and when you get to the point where there's a half a million dollars available, and hopefully that will grow over time, I would certainly hope that we've all done our job well enough that services to zero to five will be, and their families, will be robust enough that we can start looking at other things. And in how many years it'll take to get that, I don't know. I think that's an unknown at this point. But absolutely, that caveat is there.
Phil, would it be fair just to kind of, with the public, would it be fair to say that when we started all this, it was our, it was like the dream, you know, the bubble of this is what we can accomplish? So I think a lot of things were said and anticipated and things like that by that.
And I think we're all learning.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely.
And so I think, you know, maybe a little bit to Greg's question there, too, that, you know, ultimately, ten years down the road, fifteen, that's what things might look like, is a little bit more to maybe, you know, to the elementary or the high school kids, college or whatever. And now we're just, have to start low and...
You know, the idea of a gift before it happens is all anticipation, and it's all dreaming, and then you get the gift, and then you look at what's attached to it. And with the trust document came very clear language about including things like in-home programming. And so that puts us at the Community Foundation in the position of saying, well, now we've got to look at this a little bit differently, and how do we accomplish what we committed to her that we would do? And so that's our goal, to work with you. And there'll probably be some twists and turns as we go through this, and we want to be absolutely as transparent as possible in this. And that's part of why I wanted to give you this, because this is our board, this is approved by our board as the direction the board is going this way.
Thank you. Dr. Ellis, we'd really appreciate your coming and clarifying this for us, because I think that, like you say, as we were looking at the big picture and the dream, we anticipated it would happen quickly. And of course, it doesn't because of the things that are attached to this. And I think you've really made it clear to us. Although I would certainly open the floor to questions from the audience, or comments, or... Yes? Make sure, make sure when you're speaking from the audience that you say your name and...
My name's Joe Shane. I guess my question is more directed to the board. There's a client, whether they're here or something, I saw something like, this is a tremendous amount of money. And I don't think anybody on board or even Ben Williams is a person of a kind of, well, you know, a parent to this. But I'm sure you have attorneys represent you. I know you did, because I tried to look at hiring them, but they said they represent you. There's a, with this kind of amount of money, there is at least a fiduciary responsibility, if not a moral one, to our community that our interests are being protected. And I don't see it happening. And I think you should consider getting some input from some legal community, because there are issues that don't come. There's been different implications of different boards, and we need to have someone who's following, this is just a tremendous amount of money happening right now. But we don't have anybody following or watching over, from a legal standpoint, the interests of the Central Lake community or the school board. Is there any kind of intentions to look at perhaps hiring a lawyer, or having someone look over these documents and these papers to make sure that our interests are being protected?
Well, thank you, Joe, for bringing that up, because it is something that the board is concerned about and is talking about. Would you like to update where we're at with that?
Well, Joe, I know you and I have spoken on the very topic. I know Sue and I have spoken in part due to some confusion early that was shared with me directly by an advisor to the fund. That's ultimately what led to a separate meeting I had with Phil, at which point Phil was able to clarify lots of things, including the UPMIFIL law of 2009 that speaks to this spending formula that governs the available funds. And so unfortunately, I received some incorrect information from an advisor to the fund. Don't know why that happened, but the lesson is, check and double-check clearly. And when I checked it with Dr. Ellis, he was able to clarify. And that then helped clarify a lot of other things that were said early on, which I think in part led to this balloon of expectation that many of these things would or might materialize within a year, which of course, I think has gotten a lot of traction in the community. So, you know, we as all boards, the district has legal counsel, you know, we've got probably the largest law firm in the state as far as representing school districts. Do they have an expert in trust funds and endowment management? I'm sure they do. Are there others? The bottom line is, before we begin to expend, we the board, I know we've had this discussion, precious resources, we want to make sure we are at a larger head and have arrived at some sort of impasse. I have a good working relationship with Phil. He was able to help clarify some of those early concerns, and I know I relayed some of those to you. But I think your point's a good one. When there's a perpetual arrangement such as this, that is this massive and awesome and it's responsibility for the board and the district. And when I say the board and the district, it's not this board, it's all boards in the future, because this is an arrangement that will live forever. Those things should be looked at from the standpoint of having an archive of history and preserving that longitudinally.
Well, most legal agreements, I've found that what happens at the very beginning sets the precedence for the rest of the time. That's why I think it's critical at this time and now that you totally understand. What goes on between you and Phil are, it's just conversation. Anything that's writing that has set the precedents and things that will be followed for the years to come. You probably won't be here forever. I hope you have a long life, but you don't look like you're going to be here forever either, you know?
Bring a chance.
But there will always be a school board, and there will always be a Central Lake community. And they will depend on the history of how this was originally set up to continue forward in the future for the benefit of Ms. Purdy. And also, I'm concerned, I want to make sure that our board, and I don't have anything to do with the foundation, but that this money that was left to us by Ms. Purdy, her wishes are carried out explicitly, you know, to do that. I have a little bit of a foundation, and I have to light it up so perfectly to make sure that it's after your mom and somebody else doesn't change it. And I just want to, I guess, feel comfortable that we don't look like idiots ten years from now because we didn't do it right, you know? And then also the children would suffer because it wasn't done right. And I know lawyers are expensive and that, but sometimes I always thought it's better to spend ten hours to make sure that you get a hundred, you know? And this might be a case in the game, or that would, that could... And everybody needs help. I'm sure you'd all feel more comfortable, too, if, I know the community would feel comfortable. Like I said, rumors ran, ramp up when this came out. I thought every kid was going to get a PhD from graduating from Central Lake when it came out, you know?
San Diego University.
There we go. But that's just my major concern. And I guess the other question I have is, how transparent is there going to be a book? Or is there something, somebody comes in and wants to look at all this information? Will they be able to see it, or how would that be done, you know? Has anybody here seen Ms. Purdy's will, or anything, what she said she, are those documents available for the school board, for people in the community to see so we could see if this is being carried out? Because I don't know how you could do what she wants if nobody knows what she wants, if anybody's seen it.
May I respond?
Yes, please.
Two things that I think are very critical in this conversation, Joe, right? Number one, Ms. Purdy did not leave a dime to Central Lake Public Schools. Okay? She left the money to the Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation. So there is a trust agreement, there is a fund agreement, they're between Ms. Purdy and the Community Foundation. And so that is probably plain English as I can say it, that if she had left the gift to Central Lake Public Schools, that is all your business. But she didn't. She chose to leave it to the Community Foundation, and it's a donor advised fund, it's not an agency fund. And so as a result of that, it's the full responsibility of the board of the Community Foundation to carry out her wishes. I'm glad to have any of that conversation with anyone, but bottom line, that's what happened. And she started working with us back in 2003, and our job is to fulfill her wish, and we'll do our better best to do that. And the beneficiary of that will always be the children and families of Central Lake. It can't go anywhere else. It can't be directed to another community or anything like that. It's all for the benefit. But she didn't make anyone here responsible to make sure that that happened. She made the Community Foundation responsible for that. So that's a very dramatic difference.
Well, then the question is, is that who decides? See, that's, I think Greg...
The board is the Community Foundation, besides. The board is the Community Foundation.
So then our board would have to apply to the foundation for any...
That's one possibility. We may just direct money. It's a donor advised fund. If it was a field of interest fund, you would have to apply for something. But this is a donor advised fund, so it's the role of the board of the Community Foundation to make sure that Ms. Purdy's wishes are realized. So for example, last year we sat down with Mr. Williams, we talked about needs and so forth, we talked about some ideas. He put together a proposal that the advisors reviewed, our board approved. Our, the advisors recently had an idea of a little program that they would like to see happen in the, in the classroom, the three classrooms, and approached the school to see, would you be interested in that? And so there will be a combination of directed grants. For example, if the board of the Community Foundation felt, here is a wonderful opportunity, we would want to sit down with the board or the representatives and say, here's an idea, let's talk about this, and if that feels like something that wants to be done, we'll direct a grant to cover that. Let's talk about this, and if that feels like something that wants to be done, we'll direct a grant to cover that. But it's not an automatic thing, and it's not, it's a donor advised fund, not an agency fund. And I know that that may be foundational language, but there are three types of funds. There are donor advised funds, field of interest funds, and designated agency funds. If she had created a designated agency fund, then it would be simply, we send a check, you do the good work you do. It's not what she did. She set it up as a donor advised fund. So it's the board's responsibility fully to do that.
Your board?
Yes, the board of the Community Foundation.
And who, how many people are on your board? Who makes up your board? How do you know?
Thirty-four. There are 34 board members in the Community Foundation. And there can be as many as 50. And if people are interested, there's a nominating committee of the Community Foundation. And they're often, you know, looking for successful plans for boards and so forth. Board members of the Community Foundation are committed to a region, not to a specific cause or agency. The Antrim County board members, now you're going to force me off the top of my head. Bob Robbins, Jack Findlay, Tom Wiltsey, Amy Burke, Verge Mouch, Dale Claude Pierre. I think I did it. I might have missed one. But again, they represent Antrim County. They don't represent a community. And the other board members, so they all gather together and represent the five counties.
Do they have so many per county kind of, or no?
No, we can have as many as 10 per county. Can't have more than 10 per county. I can have as many as 50 glasses. And I hope that helps, because I think it is confusing if the thought is, she left this money for Central Lake Public School. It's not that simple. She left it as a donor advised fund for the children and the families and the benefit, including very specifically the early childhood program.
Now, will it be somebody at your foundation that's going to be in charge of this chunk of money? That was another question I had. Of the foundation, what percent of this money, what does this represent, your total foundation, what percent of?
So far, about 10%.
So, because I know that we make some grants or applications or whatever, 50 people are going to look over this and decide whether it's good or not. Is it a majority decision?
We're going to be working with you, you, I should say, and the community to look at the needs and so forth. There are advisors to the fund. There's an ad hoc committee of the board for the fund. The board takes this exceedingly purposeful. And, you know, we've certainly put more effort into this fund than any fund that we've experienced. And I imagine we'll continue to do that. It's a huge gift, it's a huge blessing to the community of Central Lake. And I hope that we get to the point where, as a community and as a school board, there's great appreciation for the benefit and the outpouring of her love and caring for the community, and less worry about who's doing what, and can we trust each other and so forth. At the end of the day, we're going to fulfill her wish, that is our goal. And we'll work closely with all of you to do that.
Sue?
Yes.
Maybe as a partial answer, but just doing it again. It seems like to me that if there's concern about whether you're going to accept and whatever, you know, you have an audit every year as required by our state mission. And those auditors should be, you know, the ones really looking at it, as they do every other facet, including, I don't know if it's Bill, because of the 101 years he ran there. But, you know, they do check you out on how you spend the money. You don't, you just can't be flipping the ground. And there, to me, is, you guys are spending the money, right? Once you get the grant. It should be budgeted somehow, and it should be audited.
Every penny.
And that would be my answer to you, Joe, in terms of, I don't think at this point in time you need a lawyer. But that's the way I see it.
And then we had that discussion in the board, you know, everybody remembers.
We did.
That discussion, making sure that this is part of the budget and specifically budgeted, make sure that it's spent.
Exactly.
So it has come up.
And so what I would say from the Community Foundation perspective, every time we give you a grant, there will be terms and conditions that say, this is what we understand you're going to do with that. And then upon you fulfilling that, then we can look at the next thing. So it will always be very specific to what you've said that you're going to do. And either you've approached us with an idea, or we've approached you with an idea, or with the community engagement, an idea that's been developed, again, around the purpose of the fund. And what won't ever happen is, we have a fund that supports the library. We have a fund that supports the church here. Those funds will never come to the school, because that's not what those funds are for. But this fund is a donor advised fund, and there may be many partners in what happens for the future. And so we need to think beyond your budget and think about what are the greatest needs. Like, one of the things we talked about, and I know you guys are talking about zero to three now. And that's very much a part of what is expected in early childhood. And if you guys say, we want to now serve in addition to three to five, we want to serve zero to three. That's great. We'll love to partner with you in that. And Early Head Start does that as well. And then if we start looking at, okay, by census, the census, last census showed about 150 kids, zero to five, in the Central Lake Public School District. And we know that you're able to currently serve 50 approximately of those kids in the three to five.
Fifty-four total.
Okay, so, you know, we're going to be as concerned about the other 100 kids, and how do we get them? How do we engage with you and with you as a community? Because you're not trying to get all 150 kids, you're in that three to five range. So that's not a criticism, it's just an acknowledgement that if we're really going to try to touch all kids and their families, in theory, there are 150 of them out there. And how do we do that? And we'll want to partner to figure that out, as opposed to us saying, here's how you have to do it. Or you saying, geez, now we've got to do this, and they're telling us in Traverse City we have to do this. That isn't the case. We're saying, that's part of her intent. So how do we do that? How do we fulfill that? How do we address those 150 kids and their families? And hopefully, if this is done really well, I think hopefully, there may be more kids in the future. You know, if I'm in their surrounding area and I find out that there's opportunities for early programming and stuff for my kids and so forth, man, this might be a community I want to move to. And I don't know how all of you feel about that. Some people don't want people to be there. Some people say, okay. But I would think if we all do this well, you know, we're not doing it for me, we're not doing it for Joe, we're not doing it for any of you, we're doing it for the kids. And at the end of the day, if we all fail at that, shame on us, because that's not what she wanted. She wanted us to do this for the kids. As her trustee said, do things that will put a smile on her face. And that's what he wanted.
I think the two things that haven't been measured are that. We have to be measured by a metric also. It's not, they just don't write us a check, and then we just do something, and they just look away. There's a metric that's set up that we have to meet certain things. Is it a productive program? Is it going in the right direction? Or is the money not working, or is the program not working? So, I mean, we can't, we're not going to fund just dead-end programs. All right, and the second thing is that it can't be used for bricks and mortar. There's no buildings to be built with this money.
Here's what I would say to that. I've seen that in documentation, I didn't see that in the trust document. So I don't make the rules, you know, I think that would be a discussion we would want to have going forward. I wouldn't want to be so quick as to say, no bricks and mortar. I know that's been said, and so I'm not here to take away something that somebody else said. All I'm saying is, it's not that clear. And I have to look at the trust and the fund agreement. Those are what guide me and our board.
Now, I think Keith, you may have just, that's an example, because this trust agreement says no bricks and mortar. But it says, no bricks and mortar, grants from this fund are not to be impeded for use for capital projects or facility construction. This fund does not restrict use of grants to acquire support technologies and materials to enhance programs. Now, you know, that's a dated document, and some months have passed. But that's an example of when I get information from the foundation and I share it. And Phil, I appreciate you combing through the trust. If in fact it doesn't say no bricks and mortar, that begins to, you know, I think philosophically, beg a whole lot of questions at the board level that I know we've been ruminating on from the standpoint of if we're entertaining a zero to three program, we have a few empty rooms in this district. And we were envisioning, gosh, we have dated rooms, plumbing, electrical, all the conversions that would need to take place, even envision a zero to three. Staffing ratios of one to four, dual sinks, kitchens, tons of need, tons of infrastructure, and no general fund money to do it. However, maybe in fact, we do have some different opportunities. So, you know, I think some of the early information that came out was simply incorrect.
Well, I, let me do this. Let me, having said that, so to you and Keith, to you as well, let me review that, because I know what that document says. And it was a document that was guided by the advisors to the fund. And so the advisors to the fund, one of the advisors had personal relationships with Ms. Purdy. So I need to find out what was, because I know it's in the trust document, and then I know what's in the fund agreement, and I need to make sure that there isn't additional something that is stated in conversation, and then what do we do with that? So again, I would look at this as, the greatest caution we would have is, this can only be done, and that can only be done, because this is forever. Think about forever. And so what I would say is forever is the commitment of the Community Foundation to the children and families of Central Lake. So the greatest need to make that happen, I think for us to draw a line in the sand, very frankly, and say, we'll never do this, we'll never do that, would be a mistake. So what I view of this is partnership between the Community Foundation and the community of Central Lake and the school board of Central Lake. And we will sort these things out as we go. And the board of the Community Foundation will do their very best to not only fulfill what it is that she wanted, but also to do it in a way that is most helpful and beneficial to the kids and families.
That makes me think too, you know, because when we started to talk about the zero to three, you know, it's a challenge, because we have no funding, you know. It's, we have the building, we maybe know how to hire those right people, but we have no money to fund that. And so that's where we would have to, if we did that as a school board or as a community, you know, school community, we would have to rely on that money. And that's, I think, a real concern and challenge for us. And that makes me very happy to hear you state it that way, because, you know, I would hate for us to all of a sudden admit to something, and then, oh, we can't do that, you know.
You know, this is, again, we're having to go back to partnership, that we would not put you in the position where we said, we want to partner to develop a program for zero to three, and then three years later, we say, well, we changed our mind, we're going to do something else. Again, that's why I've tried to be very clear in this commitment from zero to five. We get all of that resolved, and it's all robust and golden, then let's talk about other things. But for that to be robust and golden, and Keith, I think, referenced a very good point. You know, if we look back and say, what is the experience of the Purdy-giver classroom? And what do we see of the kids as a cohort moving on through when they're in the third grade, fifth grade, and so forth? If we are doing everything that we should do, you guys, community, Community Foundation, we should see those kids doing better and having a better chance in life. And if we're not seeing that, then we're back to why, and what can we do to make it better? And again, not what can we from outside come in and tell you you have to do, but what can we do together to make that happen? I mean, that's our goal. And again, like I said, I think the sooner we can get to the point where, you know, if you need me to come to every meeting, I'll come to every meeting. We really want this to be a relationship, not just with the school board, but with the community. Because I think it's important to know that we're not expecting the school to do everything. That would be unfair. There is a Head Start program, there's an Early Head Start program that we can have. There are things that, as I mentioned, the hospital can do. There are things that the churches can do. There are things that business can do. You know, you don't own these kids. You have them for some hours of the day. You all own these kids. I mean, these kids are your kids. You know, these families are your families, and that's what we want to support. And any way that we can do that within reason, that she didn't disallow us to do, we'll do that. And I don't think, I know I can't stand here today and say, I know exactly what that's going to look like, and I know exactly what it's going to smell like or feel like. I can't. But I think we'll know. When we're seeing our kids and our families developing as they should and being successful, we'll know. And when we don't see that, we know we haven't gotten it yet. And that could take a long time. I won't be here, Joe.
Neither will Joe.
So other comments or questions?
Will Central Lake get an updated copy of the trust fund language instead of doing, you know, what they can access?
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I can answer that. I mean, I can ask for a legal opinion on that. Like I said, there is no trust, and there is no will or document.
I thought you stated that there was a trust fund.
There was a trust fund that's being, so let me just finish my sentence. There's a trust fund, a charitable remainder unit trust, that the beneficiaries were the Community Foundation, Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation, and the Santa Barbara Community Foundation. So you have as much right to that trust as Larry, or Sue, or anyone. And so I think your question to me is, is that a public document? If it is, if our legal counsel says it's a public document, we put it in paper. But I don't know that it is. It is an agreement between the trustee and the Community Foundation. You see the difference? It's not an agreement.
So there's no language that specifically says Central Lake Trust?
No. There's language that says very specifically to support education of young children in Central Lake, Michigan. Absolutely.
So Ben, the document that you have then, so Sue understands what you actually have is what?
This is a document either that Phil or his executive assistant or someone else in the office has created, much like this document. So the document is a summary of, I'm assuming, the trust, and maybe that's why it's changed a bit over time.
It's a summary of the advisors at that time.
Of their interpretation of the trust. Okay, and I think that goes back to one of the points I made earlier when I was meeting with an advisor who very pointedly said, these are the five areas that the board would consider funding for early childhood first, and then these four follow, a 4% to 6% interest, spending on the principal. You're looking at 650 to 750 a year. And that was what was shared with me in year one. And so clearly, that, based on the zero plus zero, plus 4.4 million times 4%, 750,000 versus 150,000, a significant difference. And so, you know, it's very unfortunate, at least for all of us to have gone through these fits and turmoils and stumbles. And, you know, unfortunately, the information I got was incorrect. You've done a nice job of clearing that up.
But it hasn't exactly served to build the trust that we want.
No, no.
I would agree with you.
And, but more importantly, if-
So, let me just, let me just. In fairness to everyone, they're advisors- In fairness to everyone, they're advisors to all of our donor advised funds. The ultimate decision of what happens is not mine and it's not the advisors, it's the board of the community foundation. I don't get a vote, I'm not a board member. I'm hired by the board to fulfill the mission of the organization. But I just, I want to say that without throwing me or anybody else under a bus, we're learning as we go. And I'm here with a document approved by my board. That previous document is not approved by the board. And it's got general correct information in it that I think works. But I would say as we go along, it's going to be the board of the community foundation that we really have to turn to to say, how exactly is this going to work? I'm sorry, I know I interrupted you, but I just wanted to be clear about that point. That advisors to funds make recommendations, but they don't make decisions. It's the, it's the board of the community foundation that makes the decisions.
And I know you cleared that up when I met with you a few weeks ago. You know, what, what originally had been shared with me was I write a grant proposal for requested specific funding for a certain piece of this early childhood program. I consult with the fund advisors, there's two. They help me aim the grant at the appropriate purpose, knowing what ultimately would be able to be funded and what wouldn't. And then they, as fund advisors, the two of them would present this to the board of thirty-four for an up-down vote. So far, the, the two of these that I've worked with, we have two checks and there hasn't been any, any hiccup with that. It's worked, that part of it's worked. The piece that was incorrectly shared with me to include the, you know, the available funds per year was also, I got that cleared up when I met with Phil. Phil said, don't write the grant to the fund advisors, write the grant to me. I sit with the fund advisors. If there's any tweaking necessary on the grant based on something that might not be in the, in the guidelines. For example, I wrote a grant, say, to build a new building, but it clearly said no bricks and mortar. I would expect they should call me and say, you need to tweak this, this is outside the parameters. I would then tweak it, resubmit it, then it goes to the board for an up-down vote. So those, those are nuances that, I, I don't live in, in that world. I don't understand how that board interacts with these things. If this is a new, and it is, a new fund and a new arrangement that all of the foundation members and the board are working with and interpreting this trust, especially as pieces of it come online or become available as land is liquidated. You know, I, I don't think we're far from, from fine tuning the understanding. But bricks and mortar and no bricks and mortar, that, that's a key distinction.
Big issue.
And as soon as we can get that distinction, that would be fantastic. I know for a year I've operated under the understanding that, and it's been definitive every time, no bricks and mortar.
So again, I would say the intent of the fund advisor was to give you very accurate information. The particular fund advisor has not been an employee of the community foundation for a number of years now. So she was going on the way it was when she was there. You mentioned UPMFA and people are like, what the heck is UPMFA? Uniform Prudent Management of Institutional Funds Act, for anybody that really wants to know. What happened before was if a fund went underwater, meaning if there's a four and a half million dollar gift, the market takes a ship down and there's now four point four million in there, there would be no granting at all. Tap goes off until it's back up. And at that time, interests and earnings were available. The board changed that spending, spending policy in two thousand and ten. It is now the four percent of a twelve month rolling average. She wasn't there to know that. And so she was giving it her best based on her knowledge. So she didn't do anything wrong.
No, no.
It's just...
Just incorrect.
It was incorrect. Yep.
Can you go a little bit farther back than that? Give us a little history of the Grant Travers Foundation then. How many board members, when did it start? It started twelve board members and it grew to thirty? Or how many executive directors have been in the past? How often does that shift? You know, just a little more back, back history on that.
Sure. Community foundation was formed in nineteen ninety-two. And the, the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws called for as many as fifty board members, ten from each county. I'm not sure there ever has been that many. There are about three hundred component funds at the community foundation, assets fifty some million dollars. The first executive director was Rob Collier, who was the executive director of Rotary Charities. So this was kind of a startup off of Rotary Charities. Second executive director and the first full-time executive director was Marcia Smith, who is now the executive director of Rotary Charities. You get the impression we've been very close with Rotary Charities, it's true. And then Jean Snow was the third executive director. She was there until two thousand and nine. I'm the fourth executive director and I'm there until, I don't know when. So those are the directors.
And who is the fund advisor, or excuse me, the draft and the language with Ms. Purdy?
There are three fund advisors to the fund right now. Ben mentioned two, there's a third now. Gus Bishop, former superintendent here, Jean Snow, former executive director, and Bob Robbins, who is the current board member.
Thank you.
And by the way, I would mention Gus is a tremendous asset as a fund advisor, knowing the community and advocating for the community as well.
I just have a question because as I've been thinking, pondering about the money not actually coming to Central Lake Public Schools, I'm looking at all this money and I'm thinking about the community and the families in the community. Is that fund available to someone that may come up to you and say, we have this great idea and they have a plan all put together and they might want to run a zero to three program? Or they might have something that is, you know, some spectacular thing for that age group? Is that something that someone in the community could come to you and, and ask for a grant for something that they might have? If it's not specifically for the school and it is for the community, it's just, just a question that...
Sure. So a donor advised fund can grant to any five oh one C three organization, a governmental entity, a faith community, a tax exempted organization. So could it happen? Yes, it could happen. I think it would be our intent to work closely with the school board and Central Lake Public Schools to have as seamless of a zero to five program as we could have. So I think we would probably always, as we did when we started talking about zero to three, I, I talked to Ben about that. And so, you know, and I think one of the things I said in my recollection of that was, I realize that's outside of the scope of the Central Lake Public School Board and system. If that's the decision of the school board, I understand that. But if it's not, if the school board says, well, we'll, we'll try to make a shift, let's see if we can engage in that, then that's where we would want to have the first conversation.
Okay, good.
And again, I would probably go back to bottom, bottom, bottom line, what's best for the kids and the families. But what we can never do is hand a check to an individual. We are not allowed by law to do that. And we are not allowed to give grants to a for-profit or business or anything like that. It has to be to a tax exempt organization.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
Maybe I misunderstood something, so I'd just like to clear up. When you were talking about the donor advise, the agency fund and the field of interest, you mentioned something within the donor advise that if the foundation has an idea of something they'd like to see in place, you can go to our preschool program or our school and say, we'd like to see you do this. Is that correct? So it doesn't always have to be, hey, school or whoever write a grant to the foundation. You could come to us and say, would you do this?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Without us doing the grant, so...
And that's happened, as far as I know, one time. Tricia, can you, or Josie, can you enlighten us? I'm forgetting the exact program, but it was a simple offering of a, of a zoo or animal field experience. Thank you, thank you. Can you tell us about that?
We are currently in the process of taking care of it, or working with them. It's the nature center in Traverse City. They, the Boardman Nature Center, they, someone from the foundation actually contacted them. And they, it's kind of been a, trying to figure out, connecting the dots right now. So we got the information and so now we're connecting with the nature center to plan a visit for them to come to our school and work with our, the three classrooms. So it's something that the foundation actually started for us and like started, they got it into play for us.
And if you all had said, that doesn't fit for us, we'd be fine. You know, that's not one of those things where we'd say, you've got to do this. For the kids will be terrible.
So this was maybe an instance where this nature program, the people who conduct this, I don't know, what was it?
The Boardman Center.
Boardman Center. They contacted you and said, hey, we have this program, do you know of anybody who might want to?
Actually, one of the advisors...
And then you would say, hey, the Boardman Program contacted us about this program, this is what we do, would you be interested in that?
So one of, in this case, one of the advisors became aware of this program, thought it was a good idea and said, can we make a grant to do this? And I said, we're not going to do that without talking to the school and see if the school wants this. And so that's when Allison from our staff contacted and then put you guys in touch of the, with the conservation district. And again, that's one of those things, and, and if, that's one of those things that if it works, great, if not, no push. If we were to say, what's the other side of something where we might push? And I think Keith referenced it really well. If, okay, we've been, we've invested through Cleo's giving to the community foundation, five hundred and sixty-five, now six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, primarily into the early childhood program. If we found that the early childhood program wasn't effective and the kids weren't benefiting from it or something, then we would really struggle with that. We wouldn't say, we're turning out the tap. We would say, what's going on and how can we understand this and how can we help figure this out? I think if you all ever said, we don't care about that, my head would fly off. But, you know, that would be the only circumstance under which I could see that we would say, okay, stop, timeout. But, I mean, we're in this to support you in the early childhood program. We're in this to support the kids and families of Central Lake. And that's the essence of it. And we're not there because that's our mission, it's not our mission. It's our mission to fulfill, fulfill Cleo Purdy's wish. And that was her wish. And so we're going to do it. And we're going to do the best we can to do it.
Joe?
I understand this right now, is this law for the benefit of the elementary or pre elementary children in the community or for the benefit of the school?
To the children, first of all, to the classroom. So very specifically, there was a program developed. And so there's a commitment to that program. And then the next ring, if you will, are the zero to five kids of Central Lake community and families of those young children. And then take a next circle, once all of that is accomplished, then I think we can look at other elements. But it's all related to kids and families. It's not for the library, it's not for athletic fields. It's, it's really focused on the kids and the families. And why? Her belief was that education and development was a way to lift kids up and help them to be successful in life. And I, you guys believe in that, you wouldn't be doing what you're doing.
Now, now what if, if a local school decided or a charter school to form in our community, would they have an opportunity to, to ask you for grants or...
This is where I could never tell, give you an answer, Joe. Because here, let, let's picture this, fifty years from now, there's the East Torch and West Torch Public School Systems of the Antrim Counties. I mean, can you assure me that there's going to be a Central Lake Public School?
Just go with the rocks outside, you know, with all those little schools.
But, but you know what I mean, we're talking forever here. We don't know what's going to happen. And so I, I couldn't tell you, we would never, you know, if it's a private for-profit school, we would never grant to them.
I mean, like a church school or, or something.
It depends. That's not our intent. You know, our intent is to work with the public school system. But, you know, to say that we would never grant outside of that would be wrong of us. Because it's, we don't know what the world's going to bring.
Because the language doesn't say specifically Central Lake School.
Remember, it says the program. So as long as that, you know, Purdy-giver program is there, we're committed to that. And then second, and I tried to say that in here, first commitment's there, second commitment is to all the kids and families. And the school doesn't have all the kids and families.
So I just want to, Central Lake has a little bit of history here too. Because I was one of the first ones who fought Head Start right into the open. And Sue probably, you and I and a couple of other people, you know, can, I'll remember that. And the teacher at that time was Kathy Kuhnraut, who happens to be now the director of Head Start. So, you know, so we've got kind of a long history there. But the main reason I'm here tonight is I heard Dr. Ellis is going to be here and I want to be able to ask some intelligent questions and learn something about the preschool, having an interest in being a former elementary principal for many years. But you mentioned a couple of things there that, in your speech there, that kind of struck me like, is these, and we're looking at zero to five and apparently some of the eight brackets are fairly new, we have, we're expanding. And you mentioned best practices. I'm sure that we don't have to recreate the wheel with this because I drove this guy nuts studying best practices for years and I was elementary principal bringing in programs and he let me do it, you know? And we also brought in some, a few extra bucks. But you mentioned there's some possible leverage here where if we do, let's say, form a group, let's say, with Head Start, with Char M, with some other key people that are in the, in the preschool business here. And you mentioned the Frye Foundation, Char M's been very close with the Frye Foundation. That is a possibility if, you know, if we decide to go that route, we can use some of our money, leverage it to get other money. Not supplanting, like Ben said, not supplanting, but there's an opportunity there.
So might, might just correct you a little bit. You could use your money and our money, the Cleo, so you could use Central Lake Public Schools money. You could use, you know, the community foundation's money through the Purdy Fund. You know, certainly the relationship with Kathy and with Johann through Char M, you know, that's very important, those relations. Use those, that expertise and so forth. And how do we leverage to get some additional money? You know, would Frye be interested in here? They're interested in Char M, you know, they're interested in Charlotte Boy and Emmett Counties because the family happens to have residences there. Can we sneak in because we're part of Char M here? I don't know. We can try. I, I know Steve Wilson is the executive director of the Frye Foundation very well. We'll do our best. But again, I think what we'll look for is how do we leverage these resources? And how do we create ideally even more resources to benefit the kids and families?
Because one of the things in the Great Start Program that they're, they have earmarked, and this is which is my kind of, what's John in the area of working in now, is we've got to get them here if we're going to get a program. And transportation isn't, they're, they're looking more and more at transportation now, but it's, it's been passed on to say, well, just, you know, you got the route, you put them on the bus, it's not that easy. You know, there are certain rules and rigs we have to go by. And I think, and we're working a little bit in Lansing to get some earmarked money when this, and the government's sixty-eight million that you put out there. The earmark for, say, transportation to help the schools in that area because it's, it's a kind of a block rate now.
So when you think about, if, if you all were to decide, the community was to decide, transportation is a critical issue of getting kids and families into programs and so forth, let's talk about that. You know, certainly one of the things that we talked about was the fact when Head Start got cut back, one of the things we talked about is part of this check I just gave today, is to allow those Head Start kids to have afternoon program. Otherwise, they wouldn't have. And so, you know, again, that's not supplanting something. It's supplementing something that those kids wouldn't get as, and their families would be inconvenienced and wouldn't get as good of an experience. So we're looking for those kinds of things that we can, again, make things better.
I'd just like to note that you're, the gentlemen here, we all probably know them, but they didn't state their names. So in case Sarah needs it for the record, you know Larry Glaber and Bill Costa.
Okay. Yeah, big time.
I got a couple of former students on board.
They are legends.
They are legends.
As long as for us.
Appreciate the work of your board members. It's not an easy job, the superintendent, it's not an easy job. So appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you.
Jerry, did you have a?
I'm Jerry McAvoy.
You look so different.
I have, it's winter. I was just thinking, when you say a hundred and fifty children in, in the district, is that the school district? What is considered by the foundation the Central Lake community?
The data I gave you is Central Lake Public School District. And so the answer to your question is, I don't know yet. So here's, here's a dilemma we have. So if there are fifty-four kids in the preschool, the early childhood program, some of them are Head Start, some of them are GSRP, and some of them are funded through the Purdy Fund. I personally don't wanna see a situation where this group gets something and this group doesn't because they're in the wrong classroom or they're, they happen to live a mile from the other kid. So I don't know the answer to that. We'll work with the, the school district on that. You know, what Ms. Purdy said was the children and families of the Central Lake Public School area. And so not my job to define it. We wanna work with you on that. I think what's fair is we're probably not talking about kids from Charlotte Boy and Petaske. You know, how far are we reaching? Where's the boundary from Ellsworth or from, you know, Bel Air? You know, I don't know. But I think you guys can probably tell me, what does that mean? The kids I'm telling you about is from the census of the Central Lake Public School District.
And Jerry, just a little bit more to that hundred and fifty and that zero to five group. My guess is depending on when that census was pulled, if it was 2010, is that 2010 data?
This might have been, I would have to look. It's most recent, whatever that was.
It's down probably thirty to forty percent from there, even if it is 2010, just because if you look at our, our enrollment decline from that time to now, and you assume the same population, population shift, you know, that number's gonna come down some as far as the number of kids in that zero, one, or two, or three bracket, you know, the newborns out there who could be served. I'd say that number is probably a little bit inflated. But also if you look at the available fifty-four slots in the current early childhood program, you have the Head Start, the three-year-old, and then the four-year-old GSRP room, we have some seats available. And we have some kids in the program that come from Bel Air or that come from elsewhere. So we have maxed out the number of Central Lake residents in that age cohort to the point that we have folks coming in from out of districts. So I think that's another indication that we do not have at least folks who are interested in putting their three-year-old or four-year-old into the program and then a long waitlist behind it of Central Lake residents. I think, I think those numbers are a little bit thinner, just in all practicality, at least right now.
And I'm assuming that you don't have all of the three and four-year-olds in the Central Lake Public School District in the program?
No, no. No, I'm sure there's some, there's some kids who have their children at home, right?
Yep. And we still care about those kids.
Right. But, and ultimately, they're in our community, right? But of the ones who wanted the programming, we had to expand the boundary. We weren't sure, when we opened the third room, would we have a waitlist of two kids or forty kids or, but, you know, we were able to bring some kids in from elsewhere.
I know I've taken a whole lot more of your reading than I intended.
We really appreciate you coming in, answering those questions.
And together, we'll grow together in this.
Thank you very much. And thank you. Can I just say something real quick? I just wanted to thank you for coming in and I hope we can maintain having contact with you as a board. Because as we're working on this at the early stages, it's really important to me as a board member, I think all of us, we can have that communication work with. So we appreciate you coming and I would hope to see you again.
I've never turned down an invitation. That's true. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis.
And thank the community people that are here that have that input. I think that you really helped clarify things for us.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank your board.
Moving on then, the reports to board, your principals report.
I'll let everybody else in. Larry and Bill, thank you for coming too. That's true, did you hear?
No.
Sue, I don't know if we have discussions in that feature, but I did have one comment about this whole event. It's one of the, I think, significant things that Dr. Ellis brought up was this idea that if it follows Cleo's mission, it's possible. And I don't claim to be an expert in grant writing, but I've done some. And that's a really important point, is that when you're applying for a grant, if you always keep that mission in the back of your head, there are more possibilities than you think. And I think as a board, if we continue to do what their board is doing and say, "Is this what Cleo would want?" That, that opens up these, these brick and mortar types of options or these bus options or these transportation options. So when we're saying we'd like a grant, we're trying to write something that says, "Is just impossible to make this happen to help the transportation? And how can we fulfill Cleo's wishes without it?" You can really make a strong statement with that. That's just really one of the comments, is that, is that I don't wanna have the closed-minded belief that we have to have a definition always, that we can always remember what her mission is and what she wishes. And I think there's a lot of possibility.
I think to illustrate that point with the third fund advisor coming on and scrutinizing along with Phil, that, that agreement, you know, brings into, brings into light some new perspective on that. So I think, I think, you know, and I said this to Dr. Ellis earlier in our first meeting, show me the target and I'll hit it. And if the target moves, tell me where it moved and I'll hit it again. You know, I can write a grant. I, I will write it appropriately. But don't hide the target.
It's not to say that we don't want accurate information. I don't want it so important.
But, but I do appreciate that that information can evolve over time, but only early. I would make an assumption that as this is solidified, it can't continue to evolve, with the exception of some of those examples that Dr. Ellis brought out, you know, fifty, sixty years from now, if you have East Torch Lake and West Torch Lake, then clearly we're talking about a different day and age of public education in this, in this county and in this district. But if, looking at it through the lens of what Cleo's wishes, very quickly, I believe that should solidify because her wishes can't change. So.
Thank you very much. Should we look at the principals' report then?
Sure. I met with Paul Sack, he's a marine officer with the Antrim County Sheriff's Department, and we discussed a potential boater safety course for students at Central Lake. The reasoning is that any person born after July first of nineteen ninety-six must carry a boater safety certificate to operate any boat. And any person born after December thirty-first, nineteen seventy-eight must carry and have a certificate for jet skis and any kind of personal watercraft. So the Antrim County Marine Department decided to offer this class to students, middle school and high school students ages twelve and over. And after, I decided that that was something I thought our students would benefit from. He and I both, not with Sidney Rogers, and we picked a date of April twenty-sixth. And our role is going to be to announce and promote the class and pass off the flyers, get down on the website, et cetera. And then any interested student can pick up the course announcement. They need to get parent and legal guardian permission to complete the class. And then once they have the permission slip, they will be given a pamphlet for the boater safety course. They provide the lunch. So it's gonna be an eight to three, I think, was gonna be all day, eight to three. And so the kids will do it in one of our classrooms. And I think it's gonna be a good opportunity with all the lakes and water around us for our students to have that. The newsletter is the next item on the agenda. I've been working for a boat, two and a half, three weeks to get it printed. So I just made each of the board members a colored copy. I'm working with Jack from Creative Characters on pricing and mailing. It's been my goal to be able to mail it to all postal patrons in the school district. So we're trying to do that and wrapping things up that way. I'm really excited that we have another way to communicate with everybody through a newsletter. If you guys wanna, here's my one copy. I really appreciate all the teachers and staff that gave me photos and ideas and it all came together really nicely and I'm excited and hope it can get out soon. Then we'll also put it on, on the webpage. Our teachers have begun walkthrough. Some of our elementary teachers are going into the K-one classroom and exploring the possibilities and the big changes in there. Carrie and Bridget opened the doors and said, "Come on in." And then Carrie and Bridget are gonna continue to share with the rest of the staff and probably at board meetings what's going on in there. There's a lot of really good stuff going on in there. Not that there's not good stuff going on everywhere, but what they're doing is just so dynamic and different this year that we really wanna share that with everyone. Our rotary student this month was Monica Evans. Her parents are Tom and Robin. She plans to attend Lawrence Technical University in Southfield where she's been accepted to study architecture. So that was exciting for her. We had a super big PD day on Friday. We, the pre-K-12 teachers and the administration met and we started looking at the standards that are part of our workbook for our self-assessment, for our school improvement, and for our external review as part of our accreditation process next year. We began to identify some of our strengths and weaknesses and to look at those. Then we began this huge conversation afterwards, after the work on the standards, and began to talk about what is the teacher's process, what's a staff process for identifying and solving our problems? They appreciated the administration's willingness to listen to their needs, but we just felt like we needed a more formal process, you know, to begin to list ideas and things that they need, to begin looking at the whole process as a whole. Then we also talked about our mission statement and our belief statement and do we still believe those things? You know, there were probably five teachers, I think, in the entire room that had been part of that process. So, you know, we talked about revisiting some of those processes and revisiting our strategic plan and looking at, you know, we have some really great things going on. We have some really great committees going on, but how can they have better connections? How can we bring all those people together and make sure the message gets to everyone to include the board and parents and the community? So you can read my whole, my whole blip here, but I just really wanted to summarize that it was very, very good conversation and that the great need is to have people to be able to express their concerns and needs and then to continue our process to communicate with everyone and to make those connections. Anything that you guys wanna add to that? Because I know that there's lots of people here tonight. Okay, I just wanted to ask you. Okay. The sixth and seventh grade are gonna take a field trip this Thursday and we're excited. They're gonna go to the Charlotte Boy Library. There's a Smithsonian museum exhibit and it's called Main Street Journeys. Darcy Naum's the counselor. She wrote the grant for it. And she and Jim Dewey have been working together. They're gonna take the students with about three other chaperones up for the morning and then they'll be back for lunch. It's gonna be a really exciting day. We've got little notebooks for everybody and sharpened pencils, so they're all gonna be working actively while they're up, up at the exhibit. And then one last thing, March is Reading Month is coming up in March and the PTO has agreed to provide us with a Dr. Seuss IMAX theater that's gonna last the entire school day. So each classroom, to include preschool and Head Start, all the way up through fifth grade, left thirty-minute rotations and be able to do an IMAX theater in the gym. And then that night, they also provide red carpet and popcorn for a family movie night. So that's gonna be really exciting and that'll happen in March. So we're looking forward to that. So good things are happening, so I'm excited. So I need to ask a question. You know, to hear that Monica's going to Warren Tech, I mean, that's, that's awesome. You know, George, what he's... Oh, I know, yeah. You know, some of the, is there something like you could put together about the graduates for this year and where they're planning on going and, you know, 'cause that's the kind of thing, you know, Central Lake can't produce good people. Wrong. So, you know, I would love to be able to promote that. If, you know, I know you have, you have parental permission and all that stuff, but... Well, each student that we take to Rotary, we do that on our webpage. But it's a great idea for, for the rest of them. To maybe specifically a target, what they're gonna do, you know, that this person's gonna be playing softball at, you know, this mother... Great, great. We just put that there, yeah. You know, there's so many things. There's so many things that this class is doing that I think it really... Right. That's a good idea. Great thing. All right, so I'll start putting that together.
You need to add on, even at graduation, to have a nice flyer about...
I like that. No, it's great. It's great. You know, the other thing too, while we're on things that kids are doing, that's it? Yes? Oh, yeah, yeah. I attended the Majora Ski Meet at Shush and Ben Hicks, our own Ben Hicks, won first place in Giant Slalom and second in, in Slalom. So if you see him, give him a high five. He has, he, he's done a great job and it's a big district. There were schools from Houghton and Ironwood, the, and of course, Charlotte Boy, Petaske, Harbor, real ski schools. So I was pretty proud of him. First place.
We have non-real ski schools in...
Yes, he did a good job. Well, that's great. Yes, Harbor Springs and Petaske. And he... So where does he go now? What's next? Then he's gonna go to state. Our team, which is a co-op team with Bel Air, didn't, didn't make it to state, but Ben will be going to state. It said, "Knob's Knob," two weeks from today. And yeah, I'm really proud of him, so, you know, really go back. Yes, I thought we should decorate his lacquer. That's great. Thanks for sharing that.
I guess moving on, review of the expenditure log and the January bills. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, are there any questions or... Sarah, you had a couple?
Yeah, they were addressed through email and that was to everybody. If that was adequate, that's fine with me.
All right.
You answered easily.
Then I will entertain a motion to approve the expenditure log and January bills.
Was that key or?
It was. Okay. Second. Tracy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion is passed. Are there any other public comments at this time that anyone would like to make, anything you wanted to add?
Greg Ship's live.
He did?
He said there will be deer and cats on the street.
That's why everybody came, right?
It must be. It was supposed to be wine and cheese.
Or specifically cherry.
Cherry wine.
I have a feeling attendance at the board meetings will skyrocket.
And the comments.
You'll be here until 2:00 AM.
And we might have some interesting comments then.
Everybody might be happy.
That's right.
You may get tired of, of hearing me tell you, but Central Lake schools rock. So I just want you guys to know you do a great job and the teachers here do a great job. I'm really proud to be part of this family. So, thanks. And we'll never get tired of hearing you.
No. Every week. Refreshment provider and teacher. Tell us what you want. Let's move on to our one action item. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I just had a quick statement, mainly from the Central Lake News. We were hoping to, we've spoken with the Ellsworth School and we're gonna be able to engage some of the students there to submit contributions to the paper each month. And I have some complimentary papers for the board and the principal and such. And I have some complimentary papers for the board and the principal and such. I have some copies also that you can get to the journalism class and some of the English teachers, maybe Michelle's class. So we can encourage and engage the students to participate and show their work in our paper. We have, you know, plenty of space to highlight their works and so I just wanted to make a statement about that. I'll be getting these to you guys after the meetings and stuff, so I would appreciate that.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you very much. Now we are going to look at the action items. There's only one tonight. We listened to the first and second reading of the board policies and there's a whole list of them on this page that we have tweaked and looked at together and things like that.
We should read every number, I think.
I should read every number?
Clarification.
I don't point you. Okay, so there are like 25 of them probably.
More and more.
That we sat down and went through word by word. Yeah, it was, it was a long evening.
We needed refreshments there.
We did. So I would consider a motion to approve these board policies as submitted and changed in the first and second readings.
Anything?
All right, Betsy?
Support.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Did anyone go through and think we wanted to use May instead of Will? Things like that, you know?
All right. Those lawyers knew what they were doing.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion is carried. Moving to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Sue. Before I jump into that, the next step in these policies is I send, I was waiting on the approval now, I send electronically all the highlighted track audits that we looked at in first and second readings. I'll digitally send those all down to Coshopton, Ohio, which is their printing office and they all then print 10 copies and we will have those and then we'll have a collating party where we remove the old, insert the new. And the reason we're doing this is because it still hurts me that to do it electronically, to have this be a web-based, push the button, have it uploaded to our server is close to $9,000 a year. And I just, as we're trying to be frugal and efficient, as much as I can't stand the thought of actually spreading ten books across the floor and collating all this, it's worth $9,000. It really is. So it isn't an immediate turnaround, so if you ask three days from now, is this policy here? It's a four to six-week turnaround, but because they're adopted now and we have the ten book language, they are in effect, but we won't actually have the print copies for a period of time because it's not automated. Thank you. Moving on to continue the theme I just brought up with budget, which you have there on the first page, and I'm not gonna read the entire thing because I'm sure you've seen enough of this covered on the news and the governor's budget update and the state of the state. But I did want to highlight some positives because that word positive in the sentence used with budget is pretty rare, or at least it has been over the last three to five years in Michigan since '07 when everything really started to go down. But what we're looking at with some of the surplus monies that the Michigan Business Tax will afford the state as well as some increased tax revenues coming in is an opportunity, honestly, for a budget increase. We've dealt with flat funding, which for many districts, us included, flat has meant a cut because although the budget was held flat, the retirement rate went up or the healthcare costs went up and so really flat meant less money. And in this year, a projected overall 3% increase is what's being recommended right now for the budget. That for us equates to about $225 per pupil, which based on current enrollment is $72,000 in the black, as far as a bump in the upward direction based on where we were the previous year. Now, universities, as you see, are facing a 6.1% increase and there will be some more tweaking of this as it goes through the rest of the pipeline. However, on the bottom of the page there, you see some of the key recommendations to help hold harmless districts from increasing retirement costs. That's that $270 million for MIBSR's contributions or obligations. There's some increases there of the 1% and 1.6% respectively. That's the range between the $150 million for the foundation and that's at 83 to 111. You look at MIBSR's offset and that's where you get the 225. There's some community college money, there's some other things in there, and I'm not gonna bother reading all those. At any rate, it is good news early. I think more could have been done and hopefully more will be done as far as a bigger piece of this pie to help continue to support K-12. One thing the governor's doing and President Obama's talking a lot about is increasing funding for early childhood initiatives. And so that, in keeping with where we started the meeting, is the central theme and I don't think anyone would argue with that. Moving on to enrollment update, as of today, Central Lake Public Schools has 319 students, K-12, with two new students arriving this week, grades three and six. I saw them touring the building today. We're up eight students since the fall count. New this year in the state of Michigan, we are allowed a blended funding formula. We actually can receive per deum funding. And so there is a formula to allow for a student who moves in in November, for the district to actually capture per day costs in that foundation allowance based on the number of days a student is here between the two counts. And so we did have some students move in. We had more move in than moved out during that window and so we will see a modest increase in our blended funding with this enrollment gain, so that's good news. Winter weather leads to necessary calendar adjustments. I know this is an ongoing theme. It continues, although I have to admit, we've had a respite for the last two weeks, knock on wood, it continues. But at the present time, due to days of missed school, we have a calendar that has 168 student days and 1,097.5 hours. Cindy and I and Tiffany and I did the math on this just to make sure we were correct. This total takes into consideration the missed days and missed hours and this puts us below the state law of 170 required days and 1,098 hours. So right now we have a shortfall of two days and .5 or half an hour. So I will be working with Michelle Perkins and the EA team as we negotiate calendar adjustments. We do not have a proposal ready for the board tonight, unfortunately, I think we may have some more winter ahead, so Thursday, Friday, I think is the next system that I heard about. MHSATV welcomes Central Lake School, or Central Lake High School, thanks to Sparky, his real name's Matthew, but he goes by Sparky, and Quinn Berry for the work in this and Shelley as well. We've joined the ranks with MHSATV. We're one of 24 schools in the state right now and we have the software license, we have the laptop computer and the HD camera and we are up and running. Our agreement has us filming 10 varsity athletic contests for boys and for girls this year and any number of other things we want to video on, so we can use their server platform. We can upload the edited video to our website, we can put it on Facebook. And the first opportunity, we had three students in the stands filming, a really amazing assembly there for George and the entire Thayer family as we recognize and congratulate George on his acceptance to United States Military Academy at West Point. So Sarah, congratulations again, now that we're sitting here at the board meeting.
Can I add something else? Actually, they're doing basketball every night. And, you know, thanks to Quinn, that was a lot of work. I mean, this whole thing started back in, in the September, or middle of September, back, you know, in volleyball season. And so it's not something that just happened overnight. It's not something that you just picked up and, you know, said, "Hey, with the last week," you know, that, "Hey, I just want to do this and do this." It's been an ongoing thing and we've talked about it here before. So that's why I know the work people have had. I mean, it was quite a bit of effort on his part to get it done.
And really, I'm excited because it's here now, but the evolution of this, we'll be watching how and in what way this becomes embedded into a particular class. You know, I've talked to the staff at Joe Bird, they have embedded this same program into a current events class, so they have associated teachers, current events classes embedding this in that content. That's a unique way to do it, but we will continue, of course, to look at our staff with their respective certifications. Candace comes to mind. And find ways that this can grow and flourish beyond what it is right now. This is a phenomenal video editing curriculum and teaching those technical skills to students in a real environment, filming sporting events or filming board meetings or filming things on a field trip or class projects or assemblies is, I couldn't think of a better way to learn a degree. But you're right, it was a lofty goal and...
If anyone wants to know, you go to MHSATV, log on, sign up, and you can watch all this stuff.
Is it the whole game or available?
It's live, you can watch it live.
You can watch it there?
Yeah.
Really? I was laughing. Well, you can.
Isn't that what you do?
So next...
Yeah, you can watch it, you can watch it live no matter where you are. It's MHSATV.
Unless you're in the valley, I'm sorry.
I have a feeling Tracy might be switched up twice.
You're not going to from the valley. It's not true.
He gives me a better hearing.
Yeah, yeah. We're the ones who are the white dot on the horizon. I'm a little... Yeah, you are, it's still bad.
So the MHSATV leads into the next comment. February the 5th, last Wednesday, was Digital Learning Day in the state and I think across the nation, actually. So I asked the staff to share with me or with Shelley some of the things they were doing to help our students be digitally literate and I got responses from everything from pre-K all the way up. We had a response about third graders working on a website called spellingcity.com, iPad-led sing-alongs, math phonics, guided mini lessons in preschool, discovery ed, middle school, high school, social studies. Staff reported good examples of digital learning throughout the grades and of course, progress continues on a daily basis. Thanks to all the board members for responding about the best dates for the board, about visits, to tours for the classrooms. Before the board meeting today, after I got that finalized, I did send emails to the elementary teachers and the middle school, high school teachers, offering them the dates and the times, which will be on the next page. February 17th is a Monday. We will be in the middle school, high school building from 9 until 11:00. And I've emailed the teachers to say, "Please look at your classes you're teaching, second hour or third hour, and if you have a preference as to which, you know, which you'd like us to visit, let me know and I'll try to tailor the tour accordingly." Then we'll have lunch in the cafeteria for those who can stick around. Tuesday, Principal Norenzi and I will lead the board on tours of the elementary school and same thing, I offered the elementary staff to provide feedback in that window of time, 8:30 to 10:30 would be the best time. And Carrie responded right away and picked her slot. I believe Tricia responded right after her and I'm sure I've had some more, but I've not been looking up any of it, so I think Shelley and I will be able to have a pretty good tour tailored to the teachers' wishes, so it'll be fun.
Can I say something real quick then for the teachers who are here? Don't be afraid to have us volunteer and do something more there.
Mmm, that's the best. We can write things on the board.
There you go.
Paragraph while we're working.
There you go. Are you offering?
That's Spelding.
It was supposed to be wine and cheese.
Or specifically cherry.
Cherry wine.
I have a feeling attendance at the board meetings will skyrocket.
Moving on to finance and personnel updates, we still, as of right now, have two buses
for sale, I believe. I've got a good lead on one. We had a test drive last week. Interesting fellow from Southern Torch Lake owns and runs a, not owns but runs, and directs a local dance troupe and they're a growing dance group. They travel to colleges, they travel to high schools, they travel out of state and they're currently...
Oh, darn, come on, they're dancing.
And, well, you know, we only had one test drive, so we're still working on it. He was impressed though, because right now they're traveling in three full-size vans and he has 15 members of the dance troupe plus hula hoops and all their equipment and so one bus looks preferable. He actually does have a member of the troupe with a CDL, so that removed that concern. And he's applied for enrollment, so he will be calling me hopefully tomorrow, the next day to solidify the sale of the O1 bus and that will just leave us one to go, but I'm glad I'm holding out a little bit to try and maximize the money coming in on those sales. Technology updates, thanks to Steve and Candace and the students. We have new laptops in the VST accounting lab and we have, or we, Steve and the students and Candace have wired them with dual monitors. Early reports from the students is simply cool. And I think that says it all. And they have a spreadsheet open, they're doing accounting work. I was in there just the other day. They might have another page open on a separate monitor, they're working on two things at once. And it's good stuff. And that's also allowed Steve to repurpose the middle school, high school lab by removing the desktops that were in there and placing those down in the lab. So we've jumped from about five to six-year-old machines to machines for about two-years-old in all Windows 7. So Steve, from your perspective, having one image makes working on a lab make it a lot easier and hopefully the lab's a lot more robust, so thanks for all your work on it. Anything to add? Did I leave anything out?
No. It's nice to be supportive though with the equipment. I mean, I can make people happy. They're thanking me for things and I keep saying, "The board allows me to do this by coming up with the money to buy these devices."
They can make us coachments. I'll take pride.
There you go.
I'm sorry. Hi, Drew.
Just for you to get that on film.
That camera has a long battery. Moving on to buildings and grounds, just in time for this next little bit of super cold weather, the boiler circuit boards have been repaired in the elementary, so things are hopefully a lot more palatable. I know for a while there we had rooms in the 80s and we had some rooms a little chilly, but at least we didn't have pipes breaking. So thankfully, it appears the system is up and running. From your perspective, is it dialed in, is it working pretty well? Because I came around to check some of the rooms and they were a little awkward for the two-week period we limped along, but is it all done?
Mine was always okay. Is it cold now?
No issues over there or somewhere? If there are, let Shelley know. We'll keep working on it if there are issues. But thanks to Vern and West Climate, I know they had an individual here all day Saturday doing the work and wanted to make sure we did the work without students in the building in case there were fluctuations in the atmosphere. And, you know, because you always need something to work on, Vern tried to shoot a piece of ice and rock about the size of a fire hydrant through the snow thrower and absolutely, it absolutely grenaded the gearbox and we had gear oil leaking out. A rebuild just for the gears is around 800 to 1,000 is what they're now estimating. A new unit is $5,000 to $6,000. So clearly we are repairing this broken unit. The good news is, it's been down nine days and we haven't had snow really, Vern, I think.
Now you said that.
We have, yep. We've checked locally, we actually have a maintenance contract, I believe with Ginup that we work with and they give us a pretty good deal. And we have brought in another one just kind of to serve as a, is that what you're asking? Like a replacement to Vern?
We all have checked in for a local bit, because there are people in town that can do work.
I did not. I know Vern just went back to whoever he has maintained, so...
Just a suggestion.
No, it's a good one. So, yeah, hopefully this item is repaired before we get another 12 to 15-inch snow. And with the lakes frozen, we may not get another 12 to 15-inch snow. At least that's what the farmers have been telling me. Once the lakes freeze over, the snow machine ends, right? You don't want anything out of that one. But for the last nine days, you made a bluegrass. Well, it continues and I was right.
Are there any questions or comments about the superintendent's report? Anything you'd like to add? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion. Okay. Senator, report.
Did you miss any public comment? Did you miss the public comment opposing?
Oh, I did. I, I sort of thought I considered it and does anybody have a comment?
I think you did.
Does anyone?
I may have missed one.
Have a comment? Or question?
Much of them.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Very.
Yeah. So we have a motion, wait, that's a, we have a motion.
How long is this gonna call?
But we haven't, so we may, we may decide not to. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Oppose the same. I guess we're in then.